Well, thank you. My voice is almost gone after rodeo. So, thank you for all for joining us for our city council meeting this evening. If you'll silence any electronic devices you have, we'll call this meeting to order. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens. Mayor Johnson.
Here. Our first item of business this evening is a proclamation honoring Dr. George and Sylvia Joudla. And Kyle, could you read this?
In recognition of honoring Dr. George and Sylvia Joudla for their lifetime of service and compassion dated July 21, 2025, whereas Dr. George Joudla and his wife Sylvia first arrived in Fortuna on a pleasant September day, drawn by the welcoming spirit of Friendly City and the opportunity to contribute meaningfully to an established physician's practice, and whereas Dr. Joudla, a military physician honorably discharged from service, was hired promptly as a family physician dedicating nearly seven decades of compassionate care to the residents of Fortuna and the surrounding U-River Valley, and whereas Dr. Joudla has been known for his unwavering availability regularly making home visits to those unable to travel and responding to patients' needs at all hours embodying the true spirit of a community healer, and whereas Dr. Joudla generously mentored and inspired countless individuals pursuing careers in healthcare and other professions, offering wisdom, encouragement, and guidance that help shape the next generation of compassionate professionals, and whereas George and Sylvia Joudla opened their home and hearts to over 90 individuals including post-operative patients, indignant community members, foreign exchange students, and church missionaries, offering shelter, care, and dignity to those in need, and whereas Sylvia Joudla has devoted her life to humanitarianism, service in Humboldt County through tireless volunteering with the American Cancer Society, church-sponsored relief projects, Food for People, and other charitable organizations, and whereas together George and Sylvia have provided countless meals compassion and compassion-nesship to individuals during times of hardship modeling the highest ideals of generosity, empathy, and civic responsibility, and whereas their legacy of love and service continues to inspire generations for Fortuna residents and stands as a testament to what it means to be community pillars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fortuna hereby honors and recognizes Dr. George and Sylvia Joudla for their extraordinary contributions enduring kindness and unparalleled service to the community and expresses deep gratitude on behalf of all residents. Signed this 21st day of July 25th, or 2025, at the city of Fortuna in the state of California, signed by Mayor Mike Johnson.
Yes, you may.
Is this mic on?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to thank everybody that came to honor us. We have loved this city. We came in July of 64, July 1st, not September, and we have loved this place. Unfortunately, our kids all moved away. I don't know what's wrong with them. But two of our children are here, Jenny and Jill, and our daughter Chalice left yesterday. She had to get back home. And we have two sons. One lives in Washington and one in Mojave Desert. I just can't tell you how much I love this city. I love the climate. We are so fortunate to live here. I appreciate all the people that have come here to to honor us. We don't deserve it. We're just so grateful for the opportunity that we've had to live here and to learn of so many who have done so much for this city. I used to love to come to city council meetings, but I've gotten too old and can't hear and can't see, and you know, that happens when you're 87. But my husband just turned 90, and he was a wonderful physician for the community and loved the community deeply. We both do. We're so grateful to live here. Thank you so much for this honor. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Enoch.
And thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you. May there are chairs available if they'd like to come in.
At this time, we come to our oral comments from the public where members of the public may be heard on this at this time on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city that is not on the public meeting agenda. At this time, we cannot act or take action on any item brought forward, but we can hear your issues and what things you want to bring to the council. And at this time, so come forward. You have three minutes. We do have a timer, and we will be monitoring it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Arlene Spires, and I'm a resident of Fortuna. I'm here tonight to speak about after-school care, an issue that affects many working families in our community. Programs like the After School Education and Safety Program and the 21st Century Community Learning Centers have been vital in providing safe, enriching environments for our children during the critical hours after school. These programs support academic achievement, reduce juvenile crime, and allow parents to work without worrying about their children's safety. However, much of the support is made possible through federal and state funding. With growing uncertainty around federal budget priorities, there is a real risk that this funding could be frozen or reduced. If that happens, Fortuna's families, especially those with limited means, could be left without reliable after-school options. I urge the city council to begin developing a contingency plan now. This could include: One, identifying local funding sources such as Measure E reserves or partnerships with local foundations like the McLean Foundation. Two, exploring collaborations with community-based organizations, schools, and businesses to share resources and staffing. And three, creating a task force to assess the current capacity of after-school programs in Fortuna and identify gaps that would emerge if federal funding were interrupted. We cannot afford to wait until funding is cut to act. A proactive approach will ensure that Fortuna remains a place where families feel supported and children have the opportunity to thrive regardless of what happens in Washington. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to the well-being of our community.
Thank you.
Do I have packets here for? Yeah. Yeah. Hi, my name is Lane Moon, and I live in Royal Crest Mobile Home Park. I'm here today with this group of people to request that you put this issue of rent stabilization ordinance on the August agenda. Manufactured homes are essential to Fortuna's economy. Manufactured home parks are Fortuna neighborhoods. Park homeowners pay property taxes just like any other Fortuna homeowner. Fortuna cannot afford to enable homelessness for its park homeowners, tax-paying citizens who currently contribute 700K, 700,000 annually to the city. 20% of nation's homeless are 65-plus, you know, 65 or older. When rents go up, value of manufactured homes go down. Park residents' discretionary spending decreases impacting local economy. Statistics show for every 100 in lot increase, the resale value diminishes by 10,000. How unstable rent increases in manufactured home parks impact Fortuna's local economy? As lot rents increase, without imposing a rent stabilization ordinance now, 387 park residents are at risk of homelessness. As the rent increases, more homeowners must seek social services, increasing local burden. Every time lot rents increase, homeowners' discretionary income decreases. That means park residents in Fortuna can no longer afford to support the local economy by going to shops, restaurants, entertainment, and so on. Fortuna's manufactured park owners are non-local multimillionaires taking money out of Fortuna. Stores and investors are not part of the local economy. They're not part of residents of Fortuna, members of Fortuna Chamber of Commerce, and Stores is not part of the Better Business Bureau. By the city council not adopting an RSO, they are choosing to support non-local multimillionaires instead of supporting 387 voting senior citizens who helped get them elected. People are now facing a situation where with the next rent increase, they're unsure how they'll afford both the higher rent and essentials like medications or heat. A major issue is the uncertainty. We never know how much the rent will go up, making it hard to live sustainably on a fixed income. I am requesting that the issue of enacting a rent stabilization ordinance be placed on the August agenda.
My name is Laura, and I live in Royal Crest Mobile Park. Park Homes Essential for Affordable Housing Mandate. Fortuna only identifies 196 affordable housing units excluding manufactured homes as inventory. If Fortuna includes manufactured homes as inventory, that equals 438 total homes meeting the state definition of affordable housing. Manufactured homes represent 55% of all Fortuna's affordable housing. Fortuna is currently failing to meet the state mandate of affordable housing projections. Adding the 55% of manufactured homes will achieve that mandate, but at the current rate of lot rent increases, it's eroding the affordability factor. Forty-seven of the 58, 80% manufactured home parks are in the RSO Humboldt County and Arcata. City council members are obligated not just to increase the affordable housing, but to preserve the existing affordability. Years of unregulated Fortuna rent increases, cost of denial, Stores Management Company, the level of rent increase has become unsustainably unstable. CPI 15.2% increases in the last four years. Royal Crest 21.41% increase in the last four years. Lot rents continue to increase from 4.5% in 2022 to 6% in 2025, when the CPI went down from 6.5% in 2022 to 2.4% in 2025. This is not sustainable. If Royal Crest Mobile Park was under RSO, increases over the last four years could have been between 7.6% to 11.4%. What if your parents were in this situation? How do you think they would be impacted emotionally or financially? Not able to pay for things like medication or heat. Compassion and doing the right thing goes a long way. Park owners are entitled to make a profit, but the fair return and without exploitation of our low-income seniors. The unregulated market that currently exists in Fortuna is part of the strategy which has been perfected over decades of exploiting seniors with no regard to the negative impact of unsustainable rents. Rents at Royal Crest are some of the highest in the county. A good RSO supports park owners making fair return in their investments. However, in the case of investment partnerships, they must make additional profit for themselves, requiring exploitation and captive relationship of homeowners and their inability to move. I am requesting that that issue of enacting rent stabilization, the RSO, be placed on the August agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be here.
My name is Lana Craig, and I live in Royal Crest Mobile Home Park. The city of Fortuna recently signed a proclamation and established June 15 World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. By supporting and preserving affordability in mobile home parks, you are honoring this declaration. Otherwise, it goes against key points of this proclamation where homeowners are experiencing elder abuse today, including not being perceived as valued members of the community, ensuring dignity and well-being are protected. Imagine having to find money that does not exist on a fixed income or facing homelessness because you can no longer afford the rent. Emotional and financial abuse is common, most suffering in silence and fear of harassment or backlash. Your proclamation prohibits lack of protection of vulnerable individuals with preventative strategies, lack of legal protection to safeguard older residents. This is a plea to end elder abuse and foster a culture of respect and compassion. You have the opportunity to prevent further abuse and to become community heroes. You have the responsibility to place this issue on the August agenda. A good RSO immediately increases the value of the manufactured home so it is more appealing to new buyers. It defines limits on annual increases to protect the homeowner while still providing the park owner a fair return. It pays for itself through a reasonable monthly administration fee from all homeowners. A good RSO limits annual lot rent increases to 50% of the annual CPI, utilizes the state hearings court when necessary, allows for fair return petitions, allows for park homeowners' reduction in rent for reduction in services petition. It disallows pass-through expenses without homeowner majority approval, allows 5% lot increase upon sale of a home. Over 100 communities across the state have adopted standard RSOs such as this that have withstood court challenges for decades. I am requesting, we are requesting, that the issue of enacting a rent stabilization ordinance be placed on the August agenda. Thank you for seeing us. Thank you for hearing us.
My name is Ricardo Telamante, and I'm a resident at the Royal Crest Park for Seniors. We have a concerned or Stores had deep concern in one of their items that they sent to us with, and now we are putting a question mark after their deep concern. Item one, in 2017, a home in Royal Crest burnt to the ground, killing the resident inside who was in her, excuse me, who was in her 70s. In 2022, another home in Royal Crest burnt to the ground, but the resident escaped. There is a video of that fire showing that when the fire department hooked up the hoses to the park hydrant system, there was not enough water pressure to reach the flames. Item three, the owner of Royal Crest was out of state mandated, the owner of Royal Crest was out of state mandated compliance by failing to have the park's fire suppression system certified by the local fire authority as required to renew the park's permit to operate. Deferred maintenance is the reason they had to spend money on that system, not their so-called deep concern. Item four, the fire gate at the cul-de-sac of Crest Drive, near, right next to my residence, has always been locked since it was installed around 2020 to 2021. I believe this is a violation of state emergency preparedness requirements. In a neighborhood with 205 homes that is fenced in, there is only one emergency exit, and it is kept locked. Thank you for your time, and we hope to put this matter on the August agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city clerk, city manager, chief. I appreciate you all. I know that you continue to do good work in this city, and I really want you to know that I love living here. My name is Deborah Thomas, and I've been a resident of Humboldt County for 50 years. My parents and I both have owned different businesses in Humboldt County, so I know a little bit about business, profit, and losses. I want to be clear that I expect whoever owns the trailer park to make a profit. They're in business, and that's what you do when you're in business. I've dedicated my life to volunteering, to helping others in our community in too many ways to count. Tonight, I need to count on you, Fortuna City Council. I'm sorry, I'm gonna get upset. I bought my last home at Royal Crest, the very last home that I could afford, and when I moved in there, nobody told me that they would be raising the rents, and I was retired, and I was living on a very small pension, and I was living well. I could afford my rent. It was a little over $600, and today it's $822. And I had to go back to work full-time, and nine months ago, I was diagnosed with cancer. And if I have any emergency in my life, like my car's been broken for a month, I've had to walk to work. I am thinking about not even doing chemo because I can't afford to be sick, because I can't be homeless. I don't have anywhere to go, and we are all in that position. And I've really got off based on what I was trying to say to you, but what I really want you to do is to please put us on the agenda. I don't have the time, but I thank you for the time that you give to this county and to the city every day of your life. I really appreciate it. We need to be on the agenda. We don't have time. This is predatory. This is my rent, it's now takes up all of my social security. It's just, it's not just the rent. Everything else, as we know in life, goes up. Everything goes up, and you feel this big pinch, but when most of your money goes to rent, and I can't afford food, I can't afford my vet bill, I can't afford anything, but going to work and paying my rent, it's gone too far. Stores has asked too much of me. I believe they've asked too much of me as a senior citizen in this community. So I thank you for your time, but I want you to know I don't have any time, and I don't think many of these people do either. I've watched many of them die, be moved out, priced out. They go into convalescent homes and they die, or they go live with their family and they die. And I really want you to stop that as a city, and I love this city, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
My name is Hillary Mosher. I'm one of the authors of the Measure V Rent Stabilization Ordinance for Humboldt County. I'm a resident of a mobile home park in McKinleville, and I'm a volunteer for the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. I'm here tonight to rebut the letter you received from the attorney for Royal Crest's owner. When I am done, you will see that someone who is sworn to ethical behavior has done the opposite and attempted to pull the wool over your eyes. A huge issue is the statement that the park is not owned by the multibillion-dollar corporation known as Stores Management. He claims it's owned by Royal Crest Investors LP, but county records show that Royal Crest, in their most recent fictitious business name certification, is under Heritage Funding Corporation. Further research shows the address for Heritage Corporation is the same as Stores Management, and that the president of Heritage Corporation is Peter Dietering, who also just happens to be listed as the treasurer of Stores. Further, Heritage Corporation is also listed under Stores Management Corporation in court filings. Clearly, Heritage and Royal Crest are subsidiaries of Stores. So you see, it's all smoke and mirrors. What are they hiding? The letter also contains multiple legal case misinterpretations suggesting that rent stabilization ordinances are harmful or unconstitutional. In truth, two of the four cited cases are about city rent control ordinances that only include landlord-owned rental housing, not mobile home parks, which are totally separate legal concepts. The other two cases were also specious. The attorney goes on to say that the owner has deep concern for Royal Crest residents and demonstrates this by showing how much has been spent on deferred maintenance. Those expenditures preserve the resale value of their park or are necessary to maintain their state permit to operate. If they were compassion-based, they wouldn't have been deferred so long. The attorney's letter is part of a common, well-documented strategy to overwhelm city officials with legal threats, distortions of precedent, and selective data. RSOs are not only legal but necessary when residents are vulnerable to displacement. In order for the council's due diligence, they must follow the Fortuna General Plan Goals, which state in their housing element, H3.4, make a maximum effort to promote affordable housing for retired Fortuna residents, particularly those with limited incomes. H5, improve and conserve residential neighborhoods. H6, strive to reduce the cost of housing. Please follow your general plan's goals and place this issue on the August agenda. I know you have other important issues to deal with, but will postponing any of them result in elderly residents living in their cars? I'm giving you a detailed rebuttal letter containing specific references. Thank you, and thank you for being here and giving your time.
I'm Andrew DeWitt. I am here to support the residents of the Royal Crest Mobile Home Park and just to say I'm really impressed with their self-organization and coming together and fighting for their collective interest. I'm a, I came down from Eureka today. I'm a member of the Humboldt Tenants Union and just here to support their seeking rent stabilization. Personally, it made me really upset reading about how these folks at Stores are managing the place, maybe less so managing, as pinching and collecting. It's a shame that a company from Sacramento can have such power over people so far away, and when they take advantage of elders like this, they aren't breaking the law. They're doing good business. I applaud the residents in self-organizing and standing up for themselves and taking control of their own lives. It's easy for these people to bully one person, but not all of us standing together. They're an excellent model for all of us tenants who live in precarity and at the whim of someone else, with an extremely limited ability to exercise democracy in our own living situations. I'm standing with them and the city council. I urge you to stand with them, too. It's crazy. When the price of eggs rises, we hear about supply chains, disease, and other acts of nature, but when rents rise, no less rent for the land underneath the house that you own, the reason is suspiciously absent. Why? Because unlike eggs, rent hikes do not reflect costs, they reflect power. It didn't get pricier for people to manage the land under these houses. They just raised the rents because they can, and we pay because we must. They're following the rules. And the result? Over 6,000 people in Humboldt lack access to an affordable home. You've all likely seen the 2025 housing report. Half of us in Humboldt County are renters, and to be clear, this isn't, this is a system working as intended. In this system, too, is an amalgamation of choices. The folks at Stores are choosing to pinch a community of elders and low-income individuals, but they didn't count on them unionizing and fighting back. Now, council, you have the choice, you have the chance to make a choice. Royal Crest needs stabilized rent ordinance, and we all need rent control. Stand with Royal Crest. Thank you.
I've never done this before. My name is Gail Lorich. I live also in Royal Crest, and I'm gonna speak for everybody tonight that did not come up here. We are not all public speakers. I'm retired. We're all retired people. We live in this city. We pay money for buying goods in this city. I pay $1,000 a year actually in property taxes. I don't even own the land. I put all my money in my mobile home. I love it. I want to stay there. I'm okay, but a lot of my neighbors are not. I talk to multiple people who cannot afford to rent their homes in the wintertime. They can't, I mean, they cannot run the heat. They can't—I mean, they cannot run the heat. One person stays in one room, and people cannot afford to buy food. One woman got rid of her pet. Feed the pet or feed myself—the choice. I'm really afraid this year, the next rent increase, because people can't afford it. And some people say, "Well, sell your home and move out." Who are we gonna sell it to? Where are we gonna go? Where can we go that's any cheaper than what we have right now, which we thought was cheap? I moved in four years ago. I've seen the 21% increase. I can't personally take much more of that either. And—but these people are really hurting. They're your friends, your neighbors. They vote. Their families vote. Their friends vote. Please, please help us and be serious on the Elder Abuse Proclamation and help our seniors. Thank you very much.
My name is Teresa Ledesma. My mom is Lina Meyer. Su esposo is Jerry Meyer. Vivien in Royal Crest.
Yeah, so her mom lives in Royal Crest, and her mom is Lina Ledesma. And Jerry Meyer.
Jerry tiene cáncer de garganta. My mom tiene Alzheimer. Con un solo cheque, nos vivimos los tres, porque tenemos que pagar pues servicio médico, la renta de la casa, y pues realmente estamos en una situación pues muy especial.
Jerry has throat cancer, and Lina has Alzheimer's. And the three of them have to survive off of one check, and it's impossible.
Pues pedimos que nos ayuden para que no se acabe subiendo la mensualidad de la casa y podamos seguir teniendo donde vivir, porque no tendría donde llevar a mi mamá y a Jerry.
We would like help with being able to afford housing, because we don't have a place to go if we're unable to afford to live there.
Thank you.
My name is Lionel Carroll. I grew up here in Fortuna, a resident of Royal Crest Mobile Estates, Arnold B. Ditchcock veteran. I have—I don't know if I should say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I have 13 years of recovery from drugs and alcohol. And I feel fortunate to be in Royal Crest. I do, however, feel sad for a lot of reasons. I know there's a number of elder people in here, you know. I'm gonna turn 69 in November. And I retired at 66, and I have—I had to go back to work, you know. And I got two new knees and a hip, you know. Veterans helped me out with that. So I'm gonna try to retire in '70, next year. So getting Social Security, I only get $1,300, and the rent's $1,000. So, you know, $300 is not much to live on. I don't know if anybody else can relate to that, but that's kind of where it stands as far as financial situations and people. I lived in the car before, but I don't want to live in a car again, you know. I—I thought I was gonna die where my home is now, you know. That was my thought. And I hope not to be squeezed out, but it seems like you're getting squeezed further and further and further. It's not a very comfortable feeling to feel like you're being squeezed. And so, you know, I would hope—California—I don't—you know, they say it's a California issue. I don't know. I don't know the legal aspect of the whole thing. You know, I know I had to sign—they charged me $10 if I was going to say something. You know, one of my fears is if I say something, I might get punished for that somehow, you know. So I'm gonna take a chance and just bring myself out in the open and, you know, not have to worry about that. So I'm here to support all these people, you know. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
So—
Hi.
This young lady will be our last speaker.
Somebody have something more important?
No, but this—what I was gonna say is that we have—well, this young lady will be our last speaker.
Mayor Johnson—
We have heard your—
Mayor Johnson, we have four members of the public participating via Zoom who have been waiting in the queue since the beginning of this meeting.
It's not that we—we have heard and we want to— At the end of the meeting, there will be an opportunity for something to be placed on a future agenda item. And it's not that we are disinterested, but we have business that needs to be conducted also, and we have people waiting online to speak.
Okay.
And you—no, you can speak. You're already there.
Okay. Hi, thank you. My name is Lauren. I live in Royal Crest. My story is quite short. I'm 82. I have to work in order to continue to live in Royal Crest. I love my home. It's small. It's fine. It fits me. But I love the people in Royal Crest. They're very nice. And we're all having a real hard time constantly coming up with a way to survive. So consideration for what you're going to do is going to be appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. So we can go—go ahead.
My name is Karen Denny. I'm a resident of Royal Crest. I hope you got a calculator, because here's some math. The current rent is $822. Those that live on the bluff pay higher. So 205 trailers, some of them Royal Crest is rehabbing. So let's just say 200 units. $822 times 200 units is over $160,000 a month. Times 12 months a year is over $1.9 million for Royal Crest alone. That's all I have to say.
Salo, if you're ready, you can go ahead and speak.
Good evening, Council. My name is Salo, and I'm representing WMA. We work with mobile home park owners and managers throughout California doing training, advocacy, education, et cetera. I'm speaking here tonight to simply urge you to listen to the park owners of Fortuna. These are housing providers who are proud of the community they have built and invested in for decades and look forward to continuing to do so for many years to come. They care about their community. The owners and managers of the community under the scope tonight have been completely open to communication with the council in case anyone has any questions. They have sent you letters laying out the facts, refuting the false allegations made via a news story as well as here tonight, and made themselves available to council members or staff. I speak from experience in other areas of California that have gone in the direction the residents advocates are asking you to move Fortuna against. There's a very good reason that no respectable economist advocates for rent control. It fails at its advertised goal, but it also artificially distorts the market while also creating a combative relationship between residents, the city, and housing providers. The result is a never-ending conflict in an environment in which issues that could be resolved with a phone call instead often end up in court, causing unnecessary costs for everybody involved. Currently, residents of this community are able to resell their mobile units, which are depreciating assets, for far more than they paid for. Meanwhile, Fortuna housing providers are able to reinvest in these communities, keeping them safe and enjoyable places to live. The difficulties of managing these communities are much the same as managing a small town, with many of the same rising expenses, as you very well understand. Rising infrastructure maintenance costs impact cities like Fortuna the same way it impacts communities like Royal Crest. It takes a fine balance to maintain these communities in good shape, units sold for more than they were purchased for, while at the same time keeping rents affordable. Rent control completely wrecks that fine balance. It should also be noted that the managers of this community voluntarily offer a rental assistance program for residents who may struggle to pay rent, and they've done so for many years. We strongly urge any residents struggling to pay rent to contact their managers directly. The vast majority of these communities in California offer programs like this. So I urge you again to please take the time to read the careful communications from housing providers in Fortuna and note ours and their strong opposition to rent control. They want to continue to provide the service that Fortuna desperately needs, and to do so with pride and safety and enjoyability of the communities they have built. I make myself available to you or your staff if you have any questions in the same way that the community managers and their representatives have done. Thank you.
Lev G., if you're ready, you can start.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me?
They can hear you.
Hi, my name is Lev. I'm in Arcata, and I'm a member of the Humboldt Tenants Union, fighting for the rights of all tenants. I'm here today to speak in support of the seniors who are fighting for the rent stabilization. Many cities regulate rent increases in mobile home parks. The reason is that these homes are not as mobile as the name suggests. Moving a mobile home can cost tens of thousands of dollars. Without legal protection, homeowners are at a structural disadvantage in negotiations with greedy and unscrupulous park managers. Without protections, they are at the mercy of arbitrary rent increases with little recourse to move elsewhere. This is a patently unfair situation, and it's no way for a community to treat its seniors. I urge the council to place rent stabilization on the agenda and to subsequently vote in favor of rent stabilization. Thank you.
Amy Scott, if you're ready, you can go.
Hi, yes, thank you. I am also with the Humboldt Tenants Union, and I'm here to speak on—in solidarity with the Royal Crest residents. I'm gonna echo some things that Andy Dewid shared earlier, and that is that the cost of rent increase doesn't actually equate to the cost of maintenance, as many would like to say. And you can tell that by looking at profit statements. When it comes down to it, housing is a human right. And especially when it comes to supporting our elder community who have worked tirelessly their entire lives, who have given so much to create these communities that we enjoy, I just can't urge enough to exercise the power that you have. It's—there's—it's—there's very few chances for us to really make a difference with other people in our lives. And you guys are given that opportunity right now to add this to your agenda and to seriously consider supporting these wonderful additions to our Humboldt community. So I ask that you would add the—I'll give you guys—I'll save some time and ask that you guys add this to your agenda in August. Thank you so much.
MC, if you're ready, you can go.
Hi, yeah. I'm here to advocate for rent stabilization. As I'm sure many of you know, plenty of people are struggling while a very small amount are doing really quite well for themselves. Reading an article on the matter, the idea that seniors can't retire or having to come out of retirement or outright being priced out of their homes, or all of the other comments of hardships from the other speakers, is maddening. These are examples of how badly the most vulnerable are exploited. This issue was a part of a much larger dynamic where basic needs are treated as investment assets and not human rights. Stores Management, a key organization in this case of exploitation, has had a bad reputation—has a bad record for a long time now, where in one case, they raised the rent of—the rent 230% over 10 years. This happened in Orangevale from 2011 to 2021, Orangevale being where Stores Management is incorporated. If they do this to their own local community, how do you think they'll treat others? If you read the Save Our Seniors petition, it is very reasonable and fair to Stores Management, arguably too fair. Though not as large as institutions like BlackRock/Blackstone, Stores operates off the same model of prioritizing returns on investments over providing quality services. Stores just specializes on mobile homes, which tends to be a smaller but more vulnerable demographic. Save Our Seniors then goes on to make a compelling case that the rent increases will not only benefit Fortuna, but they actually harm—that—but what Stores is doing actually harms Fortuna financially and socially, costing tax money and pushing people into the streets. This whole county and state are in a shelter crisis. Without strong leadership on issues like this, the problem will only get worse. I would encourage you to implement a rent stabilization order—ordinance to stem the tide of poverty. Please look out for your constituents and prioritize them over the profits of a questionably performing management company. Not only is this the moral thing to do, but it's also the smart thing to do. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle Bushnell, Second District Supervisor. I want to say that I've had many of the folks behind me from Royal Crest and others reach out to me as they feel they have no choice, and I think the council has heard from some as well. I do have a kind of a unique situation where I own a trailer in Royal Crest, and my sister-in-law lives there. And so it does pose that I—I can't—I have a little bit of a conflict that I have to deal with. But I want to say, as the county supervisor, if there is any way I can help, even if, you know, contacting the management company or doing some kind of, like, session, learning session, I'm happy to help with that or assist in any way I can for these folks. And not—the fear of not being able to pay your rent is not just Royal Crest. It's across Humboldt County wide. We hear it a lot in the unincorporated. It's a scary thing when you don't know where your money's gonna come from or if your money can't pay your rent, especially as a retired person. I thank the folks tonight for coming here and expressing their concerns to you and that they are struggling, and I'm happy to help in any way that I can.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a—not to take anything away from the topic at hand, but I do have a public comment as chief of police. We're partway through the month of July, which you know is our event season. And we've made it through Fortuna Fireworks Festival, two weekends of rodeo events, Auto Expo is coming up this weekend. And we've had a few arrests, but based off of the sheer number of people in town, we're feeling pretty good about it, managing the situation. I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank the agencies that have been helping us with our current staffing. They've been a huge help. So I want to say thank you to Alcohol Beverage Control, that had plainclothes agents at the events addressing crimes, California Highway Patrol, Riedel Police, Ferndale Police, Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, Eureka Police Department, Humboldt County Probation, District Attorney's Office Investigators, Cal Fire, State Parks—and the State Parks Officer was one of our former employees, which was nice to see him back. And Arcata PD was kind enough, as they always are, to lend us their transport van, which we did utilize. And—but most of all, thank you to our own staff here, PD, parks, streets, all of them, for putting in countless hours to make sure that those events are successful, for the community to enjoy them, and they're safe. And then additionally, one additional thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Trent helps us every year and ongoing with the K-9 fundraising. And— Mayor Pro Tem Trent helps us every year and ongoing with the K-9 fundraising, and I want to say thank you this weekend while she was assisting at the rodeo events. She managed to collect $180 for the K-9 fund, so very much appreciated.
Well, we will close public comment, but I wanted to make a comment myself in that this is representative of the principles of our government in the United States, being able to come and speak to your local government and have those comments addressed. And thank you for coming in. You are heard, and we appreciate you. And with that, we will look to the consent calendar, where we have 22 items tonight, from city council minutes, administrative monthly report, all of the monthly reports to different departments, community development, finance, parks, police, public works, report of dispersments, water supply demand assessment, and annual property tax assessments for drainage facilities, the Astor Benefit District, Astor Sewer Maintenance District, Dove Subdivision Water, Stormwater Detention, Forest Hills Estates, Forest Hills Water Booster, Gulixon Subdivision Stormwater, Kenwood Meadows Sewer District, Rancho Buena Vista Maintenance District, the Wright Stormwater Detention, and approval of a Parks and Recreation Director appointment, authorized staff to submit a grant application for Mill Creek Habitat Connectivity, authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract for the Digestor Rehab Project, and approval of granting Pacific Gas and Electric a utility easement for a power upgrade to the Fortuna Police Department. Does anybody wish to pull anything?
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll move to our first item of council business, conduct the second reading and adopt the fire hazard severity zone map ordinance 2025.
Chair, you may want to take public comment on the consent calendar.
That is true. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar items?
Yes, Police Chief Everhart. Thank you, City Manager. I wanted to highlight in our staff report, my June staff report for the Police Department. In my long career here, this is the first time that I have seen this situation. Unfortunately, as chief, I had to declare a staffing crisis, a formal staffing crisis in June due to our staffing numbers, and we had to institute mandatory weekly overtime. And we are doing our best to navigate that situation, but I felt the council should make sure that they're aware of that.
I did hear that some of the officers are working 60 to 80 hours.
Yeah, they're doing what they can to keep things safe.
Yeah.
We also appreciate their showing up at the rodeo of all times and thank them for that, along with your neighboring agencies. So with that, we will return to the second reading and adopt fire hazard severity zone map ordinance 2025-775.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and honorable council members. I'm Sherri Meads, the Community Development Director, and as you noted, this is the second reading, which is also known as the adoption of an ordinance to adopt the fire hazard severity zone maps, which are drawn by Cal Fire and mandated by the State Fire Marshal. And what these maps do is they delineate areas of fire hazard severity risk. And so historically, the city of Fortuna did not have any parcels that showed up as having any particular fire hazard severity zone, whereas this latest update, which came out in February of 2025, does delineate 1,935 parcels within city limits as being of moderate fire risk. Now, at this point, that doesn't require anything special or different. That could change. It could end up being in the, you know, building code that certain things would be required, but at this point, it doesn't change any of the planning, which is what we are told these are for, to help with any type of planning for the community. And it is more important for those areas that have, you know, higher fire severity zone delineated areas because they would have to, you know, follow certain defensible space and things like that. We don't have that, so that's a good thing. We hope to stay that way. And so this is a requirement. The state requires that the city adopt an ordinance adopting the maps. So that's what we're doing tonight. The first time you heard about this was on June 16th, so I encourage anyone that wants to know more or actually see the pretty presentation that I made at that time to go back and watch that city council meeting. On April 14th, our beloved Fire Protection District adopted the fire hazard severity map, and basically that's it. The ordinance is obviously exempt from CEQA because it doesn't have any effect on the environment. So that's my report. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Well, in a moment, we'll open up public comment. Is there any questions or comments from council members?
I have one. I had a question when I was at the meeting, the League California Cities Meeting with Cal Fire, that we were discussing this before they brought it out, and I was really concerned that this would make fire insurance go up. And I was guaranteed that they cannot use these maps to rate your fire insurance.
I would say that the city has no control over that, but it was published as if these are strictly for jurisdictions to do for planning, for long-range planning. You know, the city will potentially look at these areas when we do our general plan update, see if we want to change density requirements or evacuation planning, that type of thing, but the city has absolutely nothing to do with insurance rates. And we were also told as planners that it wouldn't affect them.
Do you know how often they plan to update them?
It's usually about every five years.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I'm a leftover from Royal Crest, but I was curious as to how the mobile home park is situated in this.
I would have to find you on the map. If you're in the yellow, you're moderate. He's going to help me find it.
Sherri, just as a reminder, public comment is directed through the chair, and then the chair will ask staff to respond if the chair so wishes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Would you like me to answer?
It sounds like it's off.
It looks like -- I was having a hard time reading exactly where it is. It looks like it is partially potentially up on the bluff area, and if you would like, after the meeting, I can give you my card and do a better evaluation, because there is a website where you can literally put in your address, and it will tell you for sure.
Okay. So we -- no more questions or comments? All right. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-7755 and read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Ordinance 2025-7755, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna to adopt the fire hazard severity zone map from the office of the State Fire Marshal and define the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. So we come to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Chair Johnson and council members. I'd like to give you an update and request some feedback on land and water conservation fund grants. Just as a refresher, in the spring, your council authorized that we work with Lakho and Associates to develop three grants for the land and water conservation fund grant program. There is $35 million available. The max grant request is $6 million, and there is a 50% match requirement. The three grants that we were preparing grants for are the Vansil acquisition. There is $171,000 that's already been received to purchase that property from the California State Parks Habitat Conservation Fund, and there is a $121,000 pending grant from the USDA. This grant is not currently one that I need feedback from your council on because we do have funding potentially to use as match with this particular grant. The two grants that we do need, I do need input from your council, is the Riverwalk Park development. You will recall that the State Coastal Conservancy has committed $250,000. The California Natural Resource Agency has committed $620,000, and the United States Fish and Wildlife has committed $1 million. We currently do not -- in a minute, I will walk through all of the actual costs to develop these parks. There's also the Newburgh Park expansion that we were going to apply for the land and water conservation grant funds. We don't have any grant match dollars for that particular acquisition or development at this point in time. So this is the Riverwalk Park project. The city is to own and manage 7.2 acres. This is the concept plan that was developed, and this is the concept plan that Lakho and Associates started to base a budget off of that we could send to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. I'm sorry, I can't see something in my -- I have a care of this. Okay, sorry about that. So as you can see, we have a phased set of projects. I did skip one. I'm sorry. How do I go back? I need to go -- let me go back. Okay, just a second. Patience. Okay, so Phase 1 is the Riverwalk Park project. You can see that the Riverwalk Park project is at about $2.8 million and a little over $3 million, and then you add in -- why am I struggling so much with this? I'm sorry. So that total is $3.5 million for the Riverwalk Park project. Phase 1 is $3.5 million. Phase 2 is a little over $300,000, and this is the kayak launch, which means that we will need $1.9 million in general fund match. You're also considering applying for land and water conservation grant funds for the Newburgh Park expansion, and again, Lakho and Associates was developing a budget to develop the park based on this initial concept that has gone out to the public and has received feedback. And so that budget, so they also did some phasing here. You can see that some of the first phase, which is basically site infrastructure, is at $7.3 million. You add soccer fields, it's $12.6 million. You add the skate park, and the total cost of the project is $14.8 million. So as you can see, the costs of the Newburgh Park expansion and the Riverwalk Park project are relatively significant. So Riverwalk Park, again, is $3.8 million with a 50% match requirement of $1.9 million. Newburgh Park is $14.88 million with a grant match of $7.4 million. The grant match is $9.3 million. I think your council is probably aware that you don't have $9.34 million to provide in grant match for these programs. So one of the things that Lakho and Associates did is they did this phasing because they knew we were going to have this discussion about what your council is willing to contribute to these possible grants. And so as you can see, we have some phasing options, particularly for Newburgh Park. Basically, Phase 1 is the base infrastructure or $3.6 million. We could also do base in soccer fields for $6.33 million or base in the skate park for $4.6 million. We do have to write a letter of commitment to the land and water conservation grant, and so that means we need to be able to provide the grant match dollars. And so let's look a little bit at how we can do that. Sorry, I got to keep moving something here that is in my way. Okay. So the boxes in yellow are dollars that we could potentially use for grant match. So there's a remaining $266,000 in unreserved general fund balance. There's remaining unreserved fund balance of a little over $900,000, and in the Measure E fund. There are potential salary savings in the general fund. We won't know till the fiscal year '24, '25 books are closed, and those costs are $300,000 to $500,000. That would be salary savings. And then there are funds in the Measure E Newburgh Park acquisition improvements of $850,000. So the potential available match is $2.5 million that we have available. There is a possibility that we could potentially use some CDBG dollars for ADA trail aspects, but we would have to get approval from CDBG to do so. So ultimately, what the input I'm asking or the feedback I'm asking for from your city council is where would you like to see the city focus in terms of either park development? Is it Riverwalk or is it Newburgh? Because we don't have $9 million to provide for match. And I apologize for the slow start on the presentation.
I'm going to personally say Newburgh Park. I think that that serves a greater number of people on a regular basis, including the soccer fields, where, like I said, every Saturday you drive through by and soccer. That is completely full and almost dangerous to cross the street there. And again, I think that could be a possible revenue structure for the city of renting those fields out and/or hosting events there. So I think Newburgh will provide more back to the city.
Any other comments?
So I have a concern with the city has no money. You know, we can't afford to pay our employees, so if we use this, are we not going to be able to do the incentives?
What's currently on the screen is that you can see that there's the employee stipends, and they're set aside, so that's taken out of fund balance, and that's where you come up with the $266,000 that's available to be used.
So is that after we have our mandatory money set aside, too?
Yes.
Or is that above the mandatory?
Oh, so the 180 days of reserve capital, that is the $4.2 million that we've deducted from the year-end fund balance. The economic contingency reserve of a little over $400,000 is deducted from fund balance. The CIP reserve of $500,000 is deducted from fund balance. The contribution to the PARS-115 trust of $170,000 is deducted from fund balance. And then there's the senior planner position at $110,000 is deducted from fund balance. The employee stipends of $331,000 are deducted from fund balance. And then the general plan update set aside of $1 million is also deducted from fund balance, leaving you with only $266,000.
So we will only have $266,000 in our?
General fund reserve, yeah. So if you tie up this $266,000 for the Newburgh Park development grant opportunity, that does mean that any future general fund requests will be difficult if you would have to dip into your working capital reserve.
I'm just really not too comfortable with that.
And may I add something else to this conversation? I have reached out to the McLean Foundation. I do have a meeting with them at 10:00 AM tomorrow to see if there's any potential partnership with either Riverwalk or Newburgh. I've also reached out to Bear River, since they did express an interest in participating in the pool development, to see if they also have any interest in working with us on any of these park expansion plans.
I would encourage those meetings.
And I should also add the grant deadline is August 5th, and so that's why I need to find out what you all are comfortable spending and on which park.
I do agree with Newburgh Park because it would be nice to be able to have tournaments and bring people into our city, fill our hotels, you know, eat at our restaurants. and bring people into our city, fill our hotels, you know, eat at our restaurants. A lot of our... Excuse me. Our kids go, my granddaughter was just in Sacramento last weekend. They go out of the area, and we're not ever bringing anybody into the area. So I think there's a really good potential there. So I like the part about Newburgh Park. I don't like the part about spending all of our money and not having a savings account.
I also think that Newburgh would be the place. We actually own that now, so...
Yeah.
The other one isn't, the purchase isn't completed yet. And it would be good to hear what our community partners want to do. And I can say from the crowd this weekend that came from out of the area to participate in rodeo and a concert and such as that, that they loved our climate. Their homes were 105, 110, and this was a vacation from heaven for them. So to have a activity, which it doesn't take place in this time of year, but pretty soon soccer, where you strenuous and sports, and they would probably love to come here for that, too.
Soccer's going on now.
Is it really?
Yeah, that's what my granddaughter was in Sacramento for soccer tournament.
My granddaughters haven't started yet, so... Dueling granddaughters. But I think, I haven't heard from Councilmember Stevens yet, but I think the consensus is to look at Newburgh. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I think I need to weigh in on this one. Chief Eberhart, we did not give our employees raises. We didn't give them colas. We gave them stipends. We've seen the presentation from the city manager with how far behind we are in pay. We're dealing with a staffing crisis. We're dealing with operational challenges. I can tell you that it's looking like, again, that my vehicle maintenance budget is going to continue to climb, doing our best to navigate that. In addition, I remember not too many meetings ago when we heard that we needed over a million dollars for the general plan as well. I just hope that the council considers all those things before committing to parks. And I'm not pro, I'm not against parks, I'm very pro parks. You all know me, you know that I advocated for the basketball court, and I believe in our parks, I love our parks. I just think there's a lot of other things to consider.
I would love to have both of these, but I don't know where the money's coming from. And I really don't want to deplete our general fund down to where we don't have any money for emergencies or...
Well, you do have money for emergencies, that's that 4.2 million. But I would like to hear from Councilmember Stevens, and then I think I could potentially offer a suggestion.
Yeah, I've got a few thoughts on it, so I think I kind of would agree with Tammy and the chief regarding the difficulties with, you know, city payroll. I think if, and I didn't really follow all the accounting, but if there is some money to be found, I would probably put it towards, put it towards the city payroll versus, you know, expanding the parks, even though it could be a missed opportunity with, you know, matching grant funds available. With that being said, if the funding or McLean or someone else said, hey, well, we can help you match some funds, you know, I would also probably, you know, prefer to see the Newburgh Park expansion happen before the Riverwalk. I do have some concerns, just make sure that we are looking at the amount of additional maintenance that's gonna cost the Parks Department to take on whatever we do. I would also be kind of curious, just for my own, satisfy my own curiosity, to revisit the Newburgh Park expansion plan. I went to the public workshop for that, and I'm not 100% sure that the end result was kind of reflected all the public input. And not to mention it's so expensive, you know, I would be curious if there is some smaller, less ambitious plan that could serve as an intermediate, you know, park expansion before we find the funds for all kinds of skate parks and everything. Maybe just simply getting it graded and mode so that people can play frisbee there or whatever, or just use it, you know? Something a little more modest might be a more immediate objective.
I want to say one more thing that I forgot to say, and you kind of brought it up. We're probably gonna need at least two more employees for the Parks Department when we develop this whole thing for the care and the taking care of that. So that's gonna add, you know, more costs, too. Our employees right now work so hard and barely can keep up on what they have.
I will just respond to, it will be very difficult to add two more Parks employees with the current budget situation that we're in. Yeah, that will be difficult. So what I could potentially offer is that if the avail, we could leave the 266,000 in the general fund unreserved balance, we could leave that alone, and then potentially utilize the unreserved fund balance in Measure E, any salary savings, and then the Measure E Newburgh Park acquisition improvements, and that would be, you know, 2.25, 2.3 million, and then possibly there could be some potential, possibly, with some other partners. And so I can just try to work from there if that seems reasonable.
Well, that was, what I was looking for originally, when I said I wanted to see what the community partners have, was before we made any decisions on this, to see what was out there.
McLean, the McLean Foundation and I have already had conversations about the Newburgh Park expansion and their participation should the pool not come to fruition. So, you know, McLean is, I think, a possibility, but again, that depends on whether other projects that are in their queue materialize. Bear River also had an interest in the pool as well, so possibly they will also have an interest if the pool doesn't materialize in the Newburgh Park expansion. But I will, I will keep working on partners because granters love partnerships, and I'll just keep plugging away at it.
Awesome.
And I will now say that I now know what it costs to develop Newburgh Park. I was not anticipating that it would be almost 15 million dollars, nor was I expecting that the Riverwalk would be 3.8 or 3.9. But I have those numbers, and so we can start to work with other grants possibly.
Thank you. It's a mouthful, isn't it? Any other items on the city manager report?
No, I felt like that was pretty good.
Okay. Now we come to future agenda items, if anybody has anything.
Okay, I actually met with some of the people from the mobile home last week, and I do apologize for being late today. I got held up behind an accident. I do think that it's a good idea to put it on the agenda. I don't know for sure that we can get it on in August. Depends on how long the city attorney takes, and I won't be here the second weekend or the second meeting in August. So if it is that one, I won't be able to participate in that. But I do think we should put it on the agenda, gather the information, and listen to it.
I agree, and I don't know if that comes first with a feasibility study from your end. It's not, I assume it's not gonna be just simple.
May I just add that I've already had conversations with the city attorney, and we're reaching out. Our city attorney doesn't have specific experience in mobile home rent stabilization ordinances. And so our city attorney has been reaching out to another attorney to see if they're willing to work, to collaborate with the City of Fortuna. Or, I don't mean collaborate, we pay them.
So I think when we have enough information to put it on the ballot, that we can present enough information.
We would bring a staff report myself, and an attorney would likely bring a staff report to you with some options, more like a workshop, and then at that point, something your council would obviously decide whether you wanted to direct the development of an ordinance or not at that point in time. And so there's a series of steps that would need to take place before we would actually adopt an ordinance.
Can we have just a discussion item on a future agenda before making it an action item?
That would be the workshop, so to speak, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And I would recommend that you have a motion to direct staff to return with a discussion item slash workshop item on mobile home rent stabilization at staff's earliest convenience, period.
I agree with that motion.
May I also add that it will be difficult to have this ordinance or this discussion in August. It's a possibility on August 18th, but it will be very dependent upon an attorney's availability.
I will second the said motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we come to council reports. Councilmember Conley.
Thank you. No business items, but I do want to thank you all, the Parks workers, police officers, agencies that helped, city staff that were out there. You know, you always say the parade's always done when you see the street sweeper, and it's, seeing them out there every single day, they're giving it their all. I appreciate every single one of them being out there and making it happen. It is a big time for Fortuna, and Fortuna would not be the economy that we are without those three events, so having them are very important, so we do appreciate our workers being out there doing it.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, I went to the REDAC meeting. They had a presentation on golden mussels. It's an invasive species that apparently is more invasive than the quagga and zebra mussels that they've been monitoring for Ruth Lake, so just making us aware that it's, you know, it's a growing threat and maybe additional restrictions at Ruth. They also proposed making some bylaws to make an easier quorum. They've been having trouble getting enough participants to get a quorum. I think the next meeting was actually canceled because there isn't one. And then there was also a proposal that they had suggested expanding the lending range that they would, you know, offer loans to, which I kind of raised a concern if they expand the region, if that's gonna mean fewer opportunities for, you know, local businesses. So I think that's kind of a work in progress. That kind of remains a concern of mine, but otherwise, I think that's kind of it for my reports.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
I went to a seminar at River Lodge put on by Humboldt Transit Authority. I learned, I'm on that committee. I learned quite a few new things. I got some brochures on some nice new vans, even electric ones, and some information on possible grants for those. So we have a meeting set up for next week, I think it is, to go over that. It was a good turnout. There's people all through all California, and I think there was a couple of people from Nevada, or a couple of transit stations from Nevada that all came. And they have the electric bus, the hydrogen bus there, and so everybody got tours of all of those, so that was pretty interesting. And I do believe that Fortuna has the best events in the county. July is an extremely busy month for us, starting out with the 3rd of July Festival, which is put on by a committee of about five people and a whole bunch of volunteers. We are very lucky in this town to have a lot of people that volunteer to help our events. None of our events would happen without the volunteers that jump in and help. Our staff is incredible, the, you know, the hours that they put in, and you see them running around emptying garbage cans, directing traffic, all over the place. Every one of them works really, really hard to keep our city looking nice and taking care of the events. And I just really, really appreciate, as the whole council does, all the stuff that they do. And let me see, I think that was, my list was at home, I didn't have a chance to get there. I think that was all on my list.
All right. Well, my past month has been primarily special events with a few things thrown in. The Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting that I attended, we brought money into Fortuna, and we approved the local transportation fund claim for Fortuna to help operate the senior bus and pave some streets. I attended the Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting earlier this month as a non-voting member from Fortuna, because I am not the official alternate, so... But I attended the meeting to see what's happening, and it's a very raring agency that has a lot of goals and big ideas and is on the cutting edge in some places, utilizing rooftop solar as a distributed through the county. My house has solar. They take the energy from my production and they put it into the grid for others. So it's a positive thing. I did miss the Historical Commission meeting because of another meeting, which is crazy. I worked on the fireworks festival. I was a volunteer overseeing the generators for the bounce houses. So if your kids went to the fireworks festival and jumped on a bounce house, we had a successful day. Also worked on the concert and the rodeo, as did my able partner in the arena and grounds committee, our general services superintendent, Bob Nat, so... And I can say, having witnessed it, that our staff does a wonderful job, from the PD down to the part-time Parks people and everybody in between. They're out there literally day and night for this event season, and it's amazing what can be done with a group of people and volunteers and the number of comments that I received, and I'm sure Bob also received from the people that attended, that thought this was the best rodeo they'd ever seen, and it was in the prettiest grounds in California. So if you didn't make it next year, get out there and check it out.
And Kalen, can you let all of your staff know how much they were appreciated?
Yeah, we, as I said, we have some of the best staff around, and they, PD, I don't know how many of those guys also worked from noon on, but it was 11 12-hour days, I know. So they're very much appreciated. They make, they make things what it is, safe and enjoyable for the community, because it's not for the rodeo association, it's for the community to enjoy. So thank you guys that come, and that's my report.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for coming.